I have at 6:45 and I'll call this meeting to order. First up is electronic participation, 2.2-3708.2 of the Code of Virginia. 1950 as a minute prevents members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Supervisor Bond has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Virginia meeting scheduled for today, Monday, September the 12th, 2022 at 6:45 to be physically held at the Government Center of Christiansburg. The reason for the request is being out of town. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other board members requesting this participation remotely. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Is Ms. here with us?
I am, thank you.
Thank you, very good, all right. Into closed meeting. Be it resolved the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining and resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. One, agency on aging. Two, Parks and Recreation Commission. Three, personnel county attorney annual review. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Into closed meeting.
This is Sarah. I can, thank you. It's my pleasure.
Me too, thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fritchowski.
Aye.
Chairble Evans.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed are considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fritchowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chairble Evans.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
At this time, I'd ask our county administrator, Mr. Meadows, if he would lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
If you're able, please rise and we'll have a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, first, presentation, recognitions and awards, and I do believe we have Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Little bit of update on some of the maintenance items, we've been working on the last month and a lot of it has been still back and forth with some storms here and there, some of them actually pretty heavy wind, and so we've done a lot of picking up debris, pushing it off to the side, and a lot of going over gravel roads that we've gone over once but then get washed out, so just a lot of back and forth of that. But we have been concentrating also brush cutting and patching. There's the surface treatment schedule still left to do, we were done with the plant mix overlay and the slurry and that, that surface treatment is mostly out, kind of in the Reiner area, Dairy Road, Chestnut Ridge, but there's also some on yellow sulfur as well, part of the, that was completed last year is going to be redone over. Like I said, brush cutting, done a lot of brush cutting, I won't go through all the roads, we are going to get another brush cutting crew, and we've had a big crew in, we're going to get some more, they're kind of making the rounds through Giles and Pialaski right now, just left Pialaski and arranged Giles these for the next couple of weeks and then it'll be down into Montgomery. And again, some of the, same kind of thing, some of the storm clamp and mowing, starting on the primaries and finishing up the secondary mowing right now. One thing that you're going to see on Route 11 between Christiansburg and Radford, you may have noticed the failure of the shoulder on the northbound side, and that's, the plan for the repair of that is underway. It's going to be a very deep repair, it's failed down deep, and so we're going to have to dig out quite a lot, and we can't put it all back at once, so there's going to be a barrier wall and traffic down to one lane because we're going to have to leave an open hole, trench for quite a while in there, so we want to go in there and fix it from the bottom up, you know, pretty substantially, I suppose, just kind of paving over it and having to do it again because we think the failure is pretty deep, some wet spots way down in that, so. And that's it, that's what I have, we, we're starting our, starting to think about some of the work we're going to have to do probably in December, January and February, so we're getting our equipment ready for a dry run that we ready for a dry run that we always do in the fall, and we'll be having a strategy conference on snow removal this fall as well. But that's all coming up. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, and the speed limit signs are being manufactured as we speak.
Thank you. Very good.
So the 114 speed has been all approved. You should be just getting the signs up now.
Excellent. I know it's taken us a while to accomplish that, and I greatly appreciate VDOT working on that speed study, and my citizens off of Route 114 will be very happy with that.
We should have a ribbon cutting or something for that one.
Well, thank you for your hard work. We'll go around the room. Supervisor Demots.
Oh, okay. Thank you for being here and for always keeping us so well informed of what's going on. I have three issues, and I think probably Vice Chair Biggs is going to bring up one of them on Price's Fork, so I'll leave that to you. So down to two issues. One is on 81, actually. Around mile marker 111, there's a sign that says bump. It's where the pavement transitions from where the new pavement is and the old. On the left lane of that, the bump is pretty drastic. I have a friend that rides a motorcycle, and she reached out to me and said that that could cause somebody to lose control of their bike, if you could look at that.
Okay.
And then on exit 114 off of 81, there at Route 8, are those lights now permanent?
Oh, yeah, they're.
Yay, good. I know they were tampered with for a while.
They may not look permanent with the big shiny poles and everything, but we don't plan on taking them down.
Great. Those are wonderful. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Bone.
I don't have anything. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I just wanted to remind you of the brush on Keister Branch Road when those guys get here because it is bad.
I mentioned it before, and they should have it on there, but I'll double check because we got a crew coming.
And another place, if they can get to it, is down that steep hill on Long Shop Road where that hairpin turn is. It's way out in the road, especially in that turn again. I saw they did a bunch of work on Long Shop Road here a couple of weeks ago, ditch work, I guess, and pulling stuff off the bank. It looks good.
Okay.
I did notice, too, I had mentioned before, on Keister Branch Road where the where Keister Branch goes under the road, it's washing, the post on the guardrail on the lower side is holding, the guardrail is holding the post up.
Right.
So it hasn't been, it hasn't been addressed. If it has, they did the wrong spot. And there's another place up there near where that old pond was. I don't know if you know where that's at, but it's, it's just above 1917 Keister Branch where the road's washing out under the guardrail. It's over into the pavement. So and it's in like a little turn.
Okay.
But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you for everything.
All right.
Thank you. Supervisor Fizikowski.
I don't really have any road issues that I can think of, but I think it was either a year or two ago, wasn't there some thought put into the alternate lanes for, you know, in case Interstate 81 gets backed up? Was anything ever done or changed on that?
They're still pursuing that. They had to apply, put that together in a smart scale application. It didn't, it didn't get approved on the last round, but I think it's going to be done again. I'll double check with the MPO section, which has a meeting this week, and with our planners, and see where we are on another application.
Because as I remember, I think you were actually thinking about doing some changes on Route 11, 460, between the interstate and the bottom of the mountain, where it's three lanes, and of course, coming up the grade is where the trucks, you know, slow down, so you need to have that extra lane. But there was some talk about doing something with that, and I was just, I was just curious because I know when we get a bad storm and the interstate gets blocked up, that's, you can always tell if you live in that area, when the interstate's blocked because you get a lot of heavy traffic. And it seems to flow through okay now, especially since that bridge was rebuilt over the railroad tracks there in Elliston. So yeah, I was just curious on that, if there are any changes that are being considered. But thank you.
Sure thing.
Supervisor King.
Don't have no question, but I appreciate you giving us an update on Rafferty Road because them's some pretty good sized holes there.
Yeah, it's, it's a good one. And the more you go in and look at it, the more you can tell it goes down there pretty deep. So yeah, be on the lookout for a project there soon.
Do you know when they're going to get started on it?
It's going to be soon because we need to get in there and do a lot of work before we get asphalt. So you'll see some stuff in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, you know what I'm going to bring up again is the roundabout on Price's Fork, and there was an accident over the weekend. It was being discussed on Facebook. And I don't know really, you know, I'll just keep bringing it up, I guess, until maybe something happens. One of the suggestions was there needs to be blinking lights there. I'm still concerned about moving, you know, the sign out there that slows people down. And I agree with you. It's just not constructed correctly to handle the way cars come through there, especially if they're going towards town. And but I don't know what.
It's being, it is being studied. Our traffic engineering group is looking at, and they're looking at all those options. They're looking at perhaps a flashing light. I don't know that the speed limit per se is going to be changed, but some max safe speed signs, you know.
Yeah, to move it out like so people are aware of it before they come right up on it.
Right.
My concern, too, is the fact that when these developments, you know, they're going, they're being built, and you're going to have so much more traffic there. And I just, I worry about the public safety issue of it. So if you could just keep us informed, I don't, how long do you think?
There will be a report of some kind. I don't know how long.
Yeah, you don't have a timeline on it?
No.
Okay, well, just say that I'm nagging about it.
Okay, yeah.
I'll keep doing it. Thank you.
And Mr. Clerk, do we have an update on the turn lanes at Bellevue Elementary School?
I know they're working hard on them, but I don't know the final end date. I don't know if they're, I think they were behind on it, but I'm not sure when they're going to be done. I can find that out and send that in an email. So you don't have to wait till next month to find out when that is.
Very good. And again, thank you for the speed study and VDOT's hard work to get that, and I look forward to those new speed limit signs changes and coming up. And will they do some red flags so the citizens will be aware?
They'll probably, new traffic patterns, whether we usually say, or, you know, reduce speed or something like that.
Absolutely.
There'll be a big kind of public information push on that.
Okay, all right, very good. Do I have any follow-ups? As always, Mr. Clerk, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next will be the public hearing on the boundary line agreement with the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County. I do not have anyone signed up, but if someone would like to come forward. Good evening, Mr. Neal.
Good evening, ma'am. I've got a handout for you all here. I'll let those get around if that's okay for just a second.
Sorry, we don't usually have all this activity.
I had them crisscrossed there. Hopefully just take, take the top two and move on to the next two.
Wait, so. This one?
Now you got us all confused.
Just two pages, all right? All right, there we go.
Should have paper clipped to forty-one.
That's all right.
I'm good. Just like an engineer takes something so simple and make it so difficult. I apologize.
Mary, I need a different one. You gave me two of the same. I need that one in your right hand.
Okay, this one?
For the record, we did not design the roundabout at Price's Fork Road. Make sure everybody's aware.
I think I should call it collating. With staples?
Yes, ma'am. I was wanting you to be, I was wanting you to be able to leaf through them very easy.
Always good to have a school teacher on the board. She keeps the strength.
Good evening, Chairblevins, members of the Board of Supervisors. I appreciate your all's time this evening. My name is John Neal. I'm with Forsight Design here in Christiansburg. I'm representing Shaw Development. Mr. David Hagan is here, as well as Kevin Conner, project manager, representing them for the corporate boundary line adjustment, public hearing that you have before you tonight. I gave you two sheets there that illustrate the request, and the first one, which is the one that is zoomed in a little bit, that you can see there, that's from the recorded subdivision plat that is on record now in Montgomery County. And that plat moved the yellow line that you see that's kind of the middle line, moved that to the left towards Brammer Lane, and that was a property line. That was a property subdivision line, existing line. We moved that to the left towards Brammer Lane. And this public hearing tonight is about moving the blue line over to the left as well. And we kind of, we all learned a long time ago that yellow and blue make green. So you kind of see those, those two lines went over there and lined up together and created a green line there that you see on the far left. And that's what we're proposing to align both the property line and the corporate boundary line, which were not aligned previously, the yellow and the blue lines, and line those up to one location that you see there at the green line. And at some point, and one of the reasons for this request, or a couple of the reasons for this request, is first to align both the corporate boundary line and the property line on one location, to line those things up. And what, one of the things that we'll do, obviously, hopefully it makes tax tickets a little bit easier, but it also will at some point in the future, and we don't have any specific plans today, but at some point in the future, when either of these parcels is developed on either side of the corporate boundary line adjustment, it'll simplify that process where you're going through VDOT and the town and the county, and both, and all of your staff would not have to look at both plans if there was two separate plans there. And you may recall there was this same, y'all did this same type of corporate boundary line adjustment for the animal care and adoption center, if you'll recall. I think that was one of the things that had a corporate boundary line that actually shifted, like we're requesting, we're shifting more land out of the town of Christiansburg and just be in Montgomery County at that point. So that's kind of the main reason is to make things a whole lot simpler for everybody involved. And then also, if you'll flip to the next sheet, and I'll give you just a little bit more information. That's the one that's zoomed out, and we're still showing the yellow and the blue and the green lines there, but we also show the topography of the overall property there. And Houchens Road is at the top of the page. Brammer Lane is at the left-hand side of the page. There was a lot of fill placed on the left-hand side of that page of property there by a previous owner, by the previous property owner. And so that has the land kind of sitting up a little bit. And then the rest of the land that's in the county falls down off, down along with Houchens Road. We designed Walnut Creek Subdivision, which is down Houchens Road and on the left, and there's a pump station called Walnut Creek Pump Station that's there. And we've talked with Chuck at the PSA. There is capacity in that pump station, and they, you all have an agreement in place with the town of Christiansburg for that sewer to go into the town of Christiansburg's pump station. So at some point in the future, whenever we develop that property that is downhill, instead of if it was in the town, it would be coming out of the town into the county and then back into the, back into the town, which is extremely challenging. And so we're shifting this line so that this land can flow directly to the Walnut Creek Pump Station. We would not have to put in another pump station. We'll reduce the number of pump stations potentially in the area and just gravity flow to the Walnut Creek Pump Station at some point in the future. It's a long ways off. And then we're setting that property line, or we'd set that property line kind of at roughly where that fill stopped because there's a whole lot of things involved with ever doing anything on that property that got filled and the geotechnical work and things like that. So trying to simplify things as much as possible, and that's the part of our request. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll go around the room. Do I have any questions? Supervisor Shepherd.
The left side of the green line would be town. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Supervisor.
Mr. Motts was switching the paper, depending on which way you're holding the paper, so.
Which way?
Brammer, Brammer Lane, if you have Brammer Lane on the left, then the stuff to the left of the green line is the town. Yes, sir.
This is why I'm not allowed to be a navigator in the car because I do that with my map. So it looks like the, as I'm reading it, it looks like it, the parcel in the center is split kind of on.
Right now, yes, ma'am.
A third to the town, and I guess a third to the county and two thirds to the town.
I think it's probably a third to the town and two thirds of the county. But yes, there are three large parcels there, and one is completely in the town, one is completely in the county, and then the other one is split.
Split. And it looks like all three of those large parcels have the same owner.
Yes, ma'am. Shaw Development.
It seems logical. I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Supervisor Fizikowski.
I don't have any questions. It seems to make a lot of sense.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor King.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Yes, ma'am. I will have them stapled next time.
Mr. Neal, thank you for being here tonight. I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this public hearing. Addendum, oh, no, I'm sorry, public address next. Guidelines for public address. The Board of Supervisors allow citizens to present comments on issues deserving of their attention during a public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, you will absorb the policies, and we will, each of you will have four minutes to speak. There's a sign up sheet. After I call the names that are on the sign up sheet, if you'd like to come forward, you may. Each speaker will have four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and to the members of the Board of Supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Acceptable etiquette is not to applaud or make loud responses. First up, I have Mr. David Hagan.
Hello, David Hagan, 1422 Smith Creek Road, Christiansburg. Okay?
Ready to begin, yes, sir.
I think it's important that I take just a quick moment and kind of tell you my history of merchants' capital tax a little bit. I go so far back that Mrs. Biggs is the only one who was here at the time. We addressed this board about 25, 30 years ago about this tax, the unfairness of the tax to both small and large merchants at the time. And basically, we were shut down and with no help whatsoever. So basically, we took some drastic moves at that point, and we moved our inventory out of county. We followed the law, and the county then responded by taking 350,000. And the county then responded by taking $350,000 out of our checking account with no notice, didn't care if it shut our business down, anything. Five years later, the Supreme Court agreed that the county had treated us unfairly and gave the money back. Because it's a, it's a voluntary tax. Backcountry, I appreciate them coming in because they took us over as the number one merchant in the county for merchants' county tax. I think you all are clear on their stand on this tax. This is an unfair voluntary tax. It's unfair to large merchants and small merchants. When you have small merchants, a small company paying more than a large corporate company, it's unfair. You know, you might have the Western Shop, for example. This lady has a saddle for three years. She pays tax on that, on that saddle for three years. It's not possible. It's just not possible. It's not fair. It's a voluntary tax. We have tons of people who don't file this tax in our county. They don't file, the merchants don't file, a lot underfile. It's not my job to tell you who that is. But all I can tell you is we try to be as fair as we can, and we've been number one for 25 years. In those 25 years, the county has gained another $40 million on this tax. You know, there's no audit, there's no process, there's no fairness to this tax. It's voluntary. You send it in, that's what you pay. You don't send it in, you don't pay. Merc, when we talk about real estate tax, you goes, go through a lot of expense and money to make it fair. The state constitution says fair and equal. It has to be fair and equal. You go through a lot of money and time on real estate tax to make sure that it's assessed properly, that makes sure that there's an appeal, all of those. None of those things are possible for this tax. It's not. It's just unfair. It's just a voluntary tax that needs, that needs to go away. You know, I thank all of the members here that are looking at this tax and looking at the fairness of it and the unfairness of this tax. I'm a little disappointed in a couple of the members that they haven't addressed the fact that it's unfair. All of you addressed the fact is we need the money. It doesn't matter if it's fair to 100, 100 merchants or one merchant. If it's unfair, you've got to follow the constitution and make it fair. Repeal this unfair, non-progressive voluntary tax. Thank you.
Up next, I have Gerald Duncan.
Hello Chairman Biggs, members of the board. I can't say enough about how unfair this tax is. Back when we started doing this, you know, you're talking about inventory being 2,000, 5,000, maybe as much as $10,000 a piece. It was tough, but we, we did it. But that's not the, that's not the values now. Values are far, 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 far higher than that now. This is a very, very, very unfair tax. You get eight of us paying, paying the majority of it. That's, that's unheard of. Guys, please get this thing straightened out. Please. Thank you.
I do not have anyone signed out, else signed up on the list, but if you would like to come forward, you have four minutes if you'll state your name and address. You have four minutes. When it starts flashing yellow, that's your one-minute warning.
Good, I don't have to keep track of time.
Very good.
I am Stacy Martin. I own several businesses here in Christiansburg. I guess you can say I'm a little bit of a mall guy. I'm known as the mall mayor. Have four stores there, and two in Roanoke, and also a financial advisor in Blacksburg. So I live at 1480 Turnberry Lane on Reiner, and the purpose of my discussion about the merchant capital tax is something that I've been fully aware of ever since my parents owned a lawn and garden store here in Christiansburg since 1978. Imagine when I was this child and I found out we had to pay tax every year on things we hadn't sold in decades. Became kind of unfair. But I, I was curious one day. I wanted to see where did this tax come from? Well, back in 1812, federal government needed money. In 1812, the state had to send money to the federal government for the defense of the nation. They came up with two taxes, the merchants' capital and also the B poll tax. Those two taxes were assessed by the counties and sent to the, to the state, and the state sent the money to the defense of the nation. Well, in case you haven't checked your calendar, we're 210 years after 1812. Like most good taxes, they repurposed it. That in itself is unfair. It was never designed for that. But once upon a time, myself and other businesses who were in the county, if you're a small little mom and pop shop, you had no competition. You didn't have Amazon. You couldn't order anything online unless you ordered from Sears. You had to wait six, eight weeks. We're in an entirely different situation today. So this week I was up in Augusta County and Rockingham County, and I made a quick observation. And I also have a financial advisor I supervise there. I know deeply about his customer base. Let me just tell you something. The amount of wealth in Augusta and Rockingham Counties compared to Montgomery County is broadly different. You cannot even begin. I challenge you to go do a survey of household wealth. And the reason why is because you look in Rockingham County, they have, in Augusta, Augusta has no tax on, on inventory. As a result, they have Target, they have Walmart, they have Amazon's building warehouse, they have Hershey Foods, they have all these major manufacturers. Coors Brewing Company, Miller Brewing Company, over, all this. It's like, it's in the middle of nowhere and a bunch of farmland. Why did this happen? It's even, not even close to 77 or 460 to get to the Ohio and places. The reason it's happened is because just like malls, they're attracted to light. Business owners are attracted to the least expensive, most profitable place they can go. I did some quick tax analysis even on my situation. And, you know, business owners, we don't have children, so therefore we don't send kids to school. We can't use that argument. We do not use social services. Can't use that argument. The, we as business owners are paying this tax for whatever purpose it was just to pay the tax, and it's a very small partial budget. I challenge you, if you can't find 1% or 2% of your budget to cut, something is wrong, because I can do it in my business. I have to do it all the time. And so we create all kinds of economic opportunities, because when we collect sales tax, for example, something that really sticks in my craw is if you come to my store and you pay me with a credit card, I paid 3% to process the sales tax for the state. Guess how much I get paid back? Zero. That cost me $2,000 just in December alone. Not your problem, I understand. But you still get the 1% of the local, you know. So we're doing all kinds of tax collection for the government, and we're getting paid zero. And by the way, one last thing, I did a little quick calculation. To date, I have paid more merchants' capital tax than I ever have been paid for my business since 2009. That's appalling. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Good evening. My name is Marie March. I live at 2198 Sowers Road, Floyd, Virginia. I'm here tonight wearing multiple hats. One, as a multiple small business owner in Christiansburg. Two, as representing part of Montgomery County as your elected state delegate for the 7th District. And three, as the owner of NRV Homegrown. NRV Homegrown is a community organization and small business alliance representing 500 small local mom and pop businesses. These small businesses have been reaching out and asking for representation in tonight's meeting. After being contacted by many business owners and myself being a small business owner, we would like to see abolishment of the merchants' capital tax. I know many others in previous meetings have spoken about the unfair disadvantage to brick and mortar stores located in municipalities that still have this regressive tax. These retailers have to amortize this tax in and compete with companies that don't have this tax. In an era of internet sales, we have put our merchants at a grave disadvantage. I know each of you will do what's right for our community and our merchants of Montgomery County. Pleasure to speak to the board tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your service to Montgomery County.
My name is Donna Sawyers, and I live at 2471 Crown Road, Shawsville. And we own Sawyers Bus Sales over on Brammer. And just like right now, I have one bus there that's been there for probably at least four years. And it's not just due to COVID. Buses are definitely unique. And so sometimes I'll hold them for five years, it may be longer. And some things actually continued on and maybe sell to a converter, who, who knows, later. But I'm paying this tax every single year, and I've never understood why the business owners have to pay for everything, it seems like. And it's not just, I mean, all of these, these people that have talked have said everything that I have thought, okay? So it's very important, and especially not just because of COVID, but COVID has really put a big impact on everybody's business, I'm sure, and especially ours, and people riding buses with other people. I'm sure you've noticed, you don't see as many buses around nowadays. And, but, so I just ask that you please cut this tax out, because it, it's always, you know, been an issue for us ever since we started, and I appreciate all of you though. And also just one other thing, and it may not be part of the merchants' capital we're talking about, but even when I get those at the end of the year, beginning of the year, yeah, I look at it and I'll, I'll say, I'm paying taxes on a desk I bought for my office 22 years ago. And I've never understood that, because, you know, 22 years of paying tax on a desk in my office, it just doesn't seem sensible even now. And so anyway, I just ask that you please take out the merchants' tax.
Thank you ma'am. If anyone else would like to come forward to address the board, you have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is John Ashley. I live in Christiansburg. I'm just about the merchants' tax real quick. I know a guy who runs a construction company who has categorically refused to move it to Montgomery County because of that tax. But let's just go over, finish, finish going over that paperwork about the abduction plus perjury, which I'm sure all y'all still have. So just to rehash real quick, any person by deception without legal justification who takes, seizes another person with the intent to withhold them from another person is abduction. And any person who under oath lawfully administered, on any occasion willfully swore is false on such occasion, which is perjury. So if you lie under oath to a judge, you commit, commit illegal abduction. So let's see, we have the doctor's report where they say they want to adopt them, and he has their last names to make it easier. Then we have the cross-examination of the custodian where she says, oh, yeah, she contact, say, I think my feet are, anyway, they say that the mom could get custody back if she wanted. Y'all got the papers. Then the next one is going to be the, the transcripts of the mom's custody in court, where she's saying that her intention is to have this child and her other child under the same house, under the same roof. And then just three weeks later, they are sitting at the doctor's office talking about how he is going to be adopted by them, and that's why he has their last name, which is going to bring us up to July 15th. And there at the bottom, it's going to say, there are still some custody issues to be settled, but the Lucases hope to have full adoption approved sometime soon. So then we have the police report, and it says, I asked John who he wanted to, us to investigate. Wanted us to investigate against individuals lying in court to have his child taken away from him. John wants them to be charged with perjury and the kidnapping of his child. Then at the bottom. Ashley claimed that during this hearing, they stated that they only wished to have custody of the child for a short time, and then told him later that they were not going to be giving up the child. Then almost at the bottom, Ashley's told us he's attempted suicide multiple times in the past because of this. And then at the bottom, no crime has committed the people who have, by the people who have custody, custody of his child. So look, I can't change the fact that people can come to Montgomery County and lie in court to steal the child. But I think it should at least be in writing somewhere, so someone should be able to look up, open a book, and see exactly what the policy is. Now, let's just end the secret policies and have everything in the open. And then everyone can know that it's okay to steal children in Montgomery County. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Good evening. I'm Betty Coleman. I live at Stratford View Drive, Montgomery County. The last time I was here, I brought an ad for the Drag Queen Show, and that was a bad thing. Tonight I'm going to give you one that's good. And it's called the Symposium on Educational Freedom. And it is organized to allow parents that are potentially interested in homeschooling to have a place to come and ask questions and hear some information. And it's going to be at Victory Restoration Church in Christiansburg on Saturday, October the 15th, from 10 to 4. And the, the speakers, the 10 to 12 will be school choice options, which there are numerous ways to homeschool that they'll hear about. And then 12 to 130 is the legal issues about homeschooling. And then 140 to 245 are the finances. And that also varies quite a bit depending on which alternative you choose. So anyway, I wanted you all to know that they're having it. And since there's been so much discussion about what goes on in public schools, maybe you'd like to come and hear what goes on in, in home schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward for a public address?
Good evening. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. Who watched the last, last Tuesday's school board meeting? Can I imagine when you, because Glenn Chukow was the first person to speak, and when he was speaking, my jaw dropped. He said that money was not the major issue and why MCA wanted to have a union in, in MCPs. It was about creating a seated table, and, but he didn't really say why. It was all about, you know, because you guys had to share a meeting about having Virginia Tech and, and MCS Hall get together and, and you guys, and, you know, some joint meeting, but, so I wasn't sure where he was going with that. So, but my jaw dropped when he said it wasn't about money. So, and I, I just want to say, yes, it means it's good. Thank you guys for taking care of the teachers. Okay, because the teachers got their pay raise, what, last six years, I believe? So that was kind of quite a surprise. I also want to say thank you for that joint session you guys had a couple of weeks ago. That was phenomenal. You know, we need to have more of those. And since Montgomery County, since MCPs is 75% of y'all's budget, I think you guys need to have it more often. Please don't wait till December to have the next meeting. You guys, you know, you need to, you guys get back together. We need to have a joint session so you can learn the impact of the transgender model policy and the CHS renovations, and find out what the, what the truth is going on at CHS and why the budget's so expensive. I tried to do some preliminary research, and I think I left it with you guys, that Salem High School just did a renovation. Okay, Salem and CHS were basically about the same time, the same size school, have about 1,000 students. But Salem is actually larger. I think they did renovations for $40 million, not $100 million, okay? And it's a bigger school. So I'm asking you guys to do some research and find out what the difference is between their remodeling and, and ours. And we have some inflation now. They may not have, but they, you know, they just now finished there, so you got some of the same issues, you know, they were trying to do renovations during COVID, you know. And also back to a couple of weeks ago, Sue keeps on saying there's a bunch of misinformation. But again, again, she never tells us what, what it is. So we welcome a town hall meeting anytime she would like for all of us to get together and clear up the air what's, what's, what's misinformation. What I understand it is the school system hasn't been growing, and people are telling you guys it is. CHS is at 1,000 students. It hasn't changed in the last five years. You've got, they give you a school, a school for 1,400 students, so why, okay? Uh, CH is the last school in this county that will, it does not have, that has shared classrooms, okay? So that will, that will renovate that, so that's one reason for the increased, uh, number of students. But sure enough, I don't know why it went from 1,000 to 1,400, okay? And if, if overcrowding's an issue, how come we can't look at Auburn Hill, Auburn Hills or East Montgomery? East Montgomery's at 65% capacity. Auburn, I believe, is at 75%, okay? So we can redraw the lines and get, get the kids back to where they belong. So we don't have the overcrowded issues. We don't have all spending on capital. The federal government's spending more money. Inflation's out crazy. We can't afford more taxes. We need to figure out ways to cut spending and not to increase spending. So again, please hold another town hall meeting as soon as possible, so we can get to the bottom of the remodeling, the renovations with CHS. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to come forward for a public address? Would anyone else like to come forward for a public address?
My name is Wayne Coleman, and I live in the Price's Folk area of Montgomery County. And, um, again, I want to encourage you, um, sit and listen to what you're faced with, and pray for wisdom for you and for discernment. You're dealing with a lot of relatively local issues that you're calling, that you're, you're, you're positioned at your job. But a lot of those local issues are greatly affected by issues that maybe some of you aren't even aware of. I think in the coming months, all of us are going to be aware of some things. And the question is, how do we respond? How do you respond? How do we respond? I know if I were, I've said this before, if I were sitting in your seat, I wouldn't know exactly what to do. And so, my desire is to pray for you, that you'll be able to hear the voice of Holy Spirit, that you will be able to follow the lead of the Lord, to have discernment. And so I pray that, in Jesus' name. I pray that you would hear the voice of the Lord, that anything that comes up, you would not be led astray, you would not be deceived by any proposition that anyone makes or any company makes, that you will be aware, uh, supernaturally, of things that you aren't aware of in the natural, things that are going on behind the scenes, that are going to affect everything we do in our lives, that you'll be aware of those things as needed at the moment by a divine intervention. So I pray that, I pray for you. I thank you for your service, I appreciate your service, and, and wish you the best. I pray that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board?
Hello. My name is Cheryl Martin, and, um, life is interesting, and I pray that each of you have peace. We want, we would like to have peace. We would like to have the security to treat all of our employees with security. And in the times we live in today, it's not. We have dry seasons. As a business owner, we have to prepay 100% for our inventory. That's a gamble for us. That inventory may or may not sell. If it doesn't sell, we're 100% out, right? And then after that, we get taxed on it. So it's kind of an insult to an injury, pouring salt in a wound. We're suffering. You have the ability to ease that. The tax, as stated earlier, according to history, it no longer serves that, that purpose. And it's hard, I know, you have, you know, you have funds in your pocket, you've allocated those funds, you, you have to make adjustments, we do too. But we're bleeding financially. We have 20 employees right now. Some of them are single mothers, some of them are students, neurosurgeons, artists. We want to give them security, but that's very difficult in the times that we have. Amazon sucks the blood out of us, and we have to watch it, and yet we fight. People sit in the community, say they love what we have to offer, but their wallets are a little tight right now. So what are we doing? We're sitting on that inventory. We're putting it back in storage. We pull it out again, hoping it'll sell. Will it? But we're going to pay for it, not only 100%, we're going to pay, what, 103%? And that may not be a lot to you guys, but we're pouring ourselves into this. We need help, we need justice, and you have the ability to do that, and I hope that you will. I know it's not easy. Nobody wants to be, nobody wants to be the odd man out, making a change or causing the vote to wave, but that's where we are right now, and somebody has to do what's right. And so we, as business owners, are begging you to please open your heart. We're people, too. We have families. Our employees, they're part of our family. We don't want to see them suffer, but that's where it's going. I'm not going to say a lot. Obviously, my husband is a very smart man, and he's, he's not one to be quiet when he feels that something is right or wrong. Whether he's right or wrong, he'll usually come back if it's wrong, and he'll apologize, but, you know, he does his history. He, he does know finance very well. And we want to pull ahead, but we could certainly use your support in this. And that's all I have to say. I hope you guys have a great night.
Ms. Martin, could you give us your address, please?
Yes.
Or tell us where you live?
Yes. 1480 Turnberry Lane, Rider, Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address. Addendum?
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Next up, do I have a motion to move into work session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Into work session. First up, merchants' capital tax. And I placed this on the agenda under work session on August the 22nd. And we will go around the room, you all have a presentation of some questions at that last work session that came up that the staff has answered for us.
Just to follow up on that, board members, as Chairble Evans mentioned, we tried to address all the questions that came about as a result of the discussion at our last, or at your work session on August 22nd. We included that information in your board packets this evening, and Angie and I will be glad to try to address any questions related to the information, but I also know that the board wanted time this evening to discuss your thoughts on how you would like to move forward, if you want to move forward with this item.
Absolutely. So we will start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
Well, I don't know where to start the conversation, other than the fact that I agree it's an unfair tax and needs to be done away with. Supervisor King was pointing out a couple of lines in, in your email that was, uh, got my attention, and I'm thinking, if we can't come up with a viable way to replace the money this time, we need to maybe move until, wait until the first of the year to go forward.
Supervisor Demots.
I'm going to reserve my comments for later on in the discussion.
Certainly. Supervisor Fitchakowski.
I am definitely in favor of eliminating the merchants' capital, but I do see the, it seems to make more sense that we make it effective January 1st. That way, we don't disrupt the budget process, and this can be worked into our budget for next year. And that should be the least amount of pain for the county. So, but I'm definitely, would definitely want to see it go.
Supervisor King.
As I stated at our last meeting, I, I want to see it gone. I think it's an unfair tax. I just wish it was brought to our attention before we'd done our budget this round, but I am in favor of doing away with it.
I would like either Mr. Meadows or Ms. Hill to speak about how it, the, one of the questions that we had last time was, how would this affect our budget? What would we have to give up? I think that's important for the public to know. So if, if someone can speak to that, and then I'll have some questions after that.
I can start off, and Angie, if I misspeak, you can help me fix it. As we mentioned in the, in the memorandum, because the county adopts a balanced budget each year, if the board elects to eliminate the merchants' capital tax effective in this fiscal year, we will then have to make a budget amendment to reflect either a reduction in expenditures and some department or operating expense, or some adjustment to the other revenues in the budget to offset that $1.5 million difference. That is something that can be done. I'm not aware, in my tenure here, that we've ever taken a revenue source out during the fiscal year. But that, that would be the approach, if, it will require a budget amendment, either reducing expenditures in, in some operating department or activity, or reallocating revenues to offset the loss.
Were there any priorities recommended by the staff for the board to consider, whether instituting it now, or instituting it on January 1st, or waiting until July 1st?
That is a political decision.
Can you speak to what's so significant, significant about January 1?
The tax is assessed effective January 1st based on the December 31st inventory. So, so if you change the ordinance effective January 1st, it would be effective for the next year's budget. We would not have to amend the current year budget and find a revenue source or reduce an expenditure item.
Can you speak to reassessment and how that will affect next year's budget, please?
We, it's too early to, to make any predictions on reassessment. I think the general observation is that we will see real property values increase. I can't speak to how much yet, as we haven't got the final, or even preliminary, results back from the assessment group. We hope to bring that to the board in the coming weeks. But we should see some gains in property values there, which the board will then need to discuss how that affects tax revenues from real estate taxes, and that will be part of the discussion for the fiscal year '23 budget.
When is the last time that we can eliminate the merchants' tax so that it can affect next year's budget?
When could?
January 1st, to be in effect for next.
When, would we have to?
Can we do it March 1st? Can we do it April 1st, to be effective July 1?
In order for us to prepare the budget for the board in an effective manner, we would need to know during the budget process. So if you could decide that sooner than later, that would help us a lot. If we wait until after we're in the middle of the budget cycle, March or April, then we'll have to come up with a, a source at that time, cut expenditures or find a different source at that time. If you wait until after you adopt the tax rates and approve the budget, we'll be in the exact same boat that we're in now.
So if we make, possibly make the decision February 1 or in January, as opposed to making the decision now, effective January 1, is that, is that enough time? Again, if we make the decision February 1 or March 1?
I think if a decision's made prior to the adoption by the board of the budget in April, that gives the staff an opportunity to react and respond to that. And from a legal standpoint, I don't know that there is any timing requirement for a decision, it's just how it affects the budgeting. Right.
So technically, it could be made, we usually finalize our budget in April, is that correct?
That's correct.
For May, rather? Yeah.
April, yes.
Mr. McMahon, I'm saying your last name properly, I apologize appropriately, I apologize. Can you, uh, talk to, explain the merchants' tax versus the B-Pole tax? And my understanding is that the, the merchants' tax affects all businesses, and the B-Pole tax possibly only affects retail businesses?
Well, 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 first off, you can only do one or, one or, you can't do both of those taxes under state law, you can only do one. And then the, the problem we have here in Montgomery County is we have two, two towns, we have two big towns where most of the businesses that would come under B-Pole would be within the town jurisdiction, and, and if they're within the town jurisdiction, the county cannot tax them B-Pole, only because the town currently has B-Pole. So, I, I mean, the, the county could do B-Pole, but you would get very little revenue, most likely, because all the businesses are already getting taxed by the town, and you can't, they can't get taxed by both jurisdictions. So that leaves you merchants' capital, if you want to pick one of those two, you're not required to have them. But that's, that's basically the history of, of why we don't have B-Pole.
And can we structure the merchants' tax any way that we want? For example?
No, not any.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's got to be, it's got to be done in a fair manner.
So clearly, some of the businesses said that it's not fair at this moment in time. Would you say that it's fair now?
I think, I think what, the basis of, of why it's not fair is, it's because of, it's ba, it's not based on an, an event, it's not based on a sale like we have now, and so it's based on revenue, it's based on their inventory being, in essence, not sold at the end of the year, and, you know, from a business standpoint, that's seen as being unfair. And I think one of the speakers talked about the history of it, he, he's correct, it, it goes way back when, and, and it's, it, you know, I think the fairness argument is based, that it doesn't make sense from a business standpoint.
The tax is fair based on who the tax is assessed on. That is the part that is fair. It's, it's assessed equally to all of the categories that it's assessed on. It's just assessed on inventory, which is the argument that it's not fair based on that.
It's uniformly assessed, it is voluntarily reported. So, yes, that's correct.
Are there any counties that, um, have an enforcement piece to their merchants' tax?
I don't know.
I don't know. I'm not aware of any, no, ma'am.
Would it be possible for us to say, as of next fiscal year, the merchants' tax is halved 50% what it is right now? Is that something we could do?
If you're saying lower the rate, yeah, you always have that option.
Is there any minimum that it has to be?
None that I'm aware of.
I think there would be a, a point at which it would not be feasible to assess the tax, we could evaluate that. It would, if you lowered it so far... It would if you lowered it so far that it was more costly to administer the tax, then it would generate in revenue, that wouldn't make good financial sense.
How much does it cost to assess at this time?
I don't know that.
Do you have any remote?
No.
Idea? It's definitely less than $1.5 million, though.
Yes, it is less than $1.5 million, certainly. It's the costs primarily are generated in the Commissioner of Revenue's office where the returns are filed and the assessments are made. And then in the Treasurer's Office, the bills are sent from their office and collected in their office. So those are the primary costs.
Would you say that they one person is primarily dedicated to this for a certain period of time, a month of the year, rather?
We would need to ask the Commissioner and Treasurer that question. We have not asked them that.
Could we categorically say businesses, retail businesses that hold lots of inventory or that the rate is one rate versus the rest of the businesses, it's another rate? My understanding, based on what Marty or whomever said, it has to be the same across the board, is that correct?
I think there is one jurisdiction that actually does. I think what you're talking about, maybe there's one rate at a certain level of inventory. And then when you get higher inventory, the rate's lower.
Wise County.
Can you create a rate and then not to exceed a certain amount, let's say $50,000?
You could probably come up with something that would be deemed fair, yeah.
Okay, that's all my questions. I would like to further evaluate how quote unquote this tax is implemented in a fair manner across the state. I know that we have the rates of similar counties, but the term fairness is so I don't even want to use the word ambiguous, but I have a small business personally, and I have to pay this tax every year, too. And I think it's pretty ridiculous. But I also understand that $1.5 million a year is a lot of money in revenue. So I think that there's a lot of there's still a number of things that if we were trying to be fair and still have this tax in a more fair manner, I think it's still worth evaluating that. I don't know what that looks like, but I don't have any objection for businesses to pay some portion of merchants' tax so that some revenue continues to be generated. I personally agree with one of the speakers about paying tax on a desk that is, you know, 20 years old. I think it's really ridiculous. So I'd be curious to learn. I would prefer pay a one time tax once on things and then, you know, anything else that we need to do in order to make this a little bit more fair. So that's where I'm coming from. I do appreciate all of the business owners showing up. I do appreciate the business owners sharing their concerns. I do appreciate the businesses paying the taxes over the last several years. $40 million is no drop in the bucket. I think $40 million is huge to our county services over the years. I just want to be a little bit more thoughtful as we try to figure out how to quote unquote right-size this merchant possibly right-sizing this merchants' tax instead of completely eliminating it like some have proposed. One, because businesses won't necessarily leave the county. So we have some time. Will that prevent businesses from coming in the county potentially? But nothing changes, so we can continue the same level. So I would like a little bit more time to figure out whether or not this can be a more fair tax moving forward so that we don't lose all the revenue. Because in years past, $1.5 million, I mean, we've been we in years past, this county has squeaked by with hardly any room for anything. And I understand that the reassessment's coming up and we should get lots of revenue, but we I don't know about anybody else on the board, but, you know, I certainly didn't consider the merchants' tax to go away as I've thought through how the county was going to manage the resource.
One thing about the desk. The desk is a different category of tax. It's business furniture. Yes.
Personal. So, yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. Does that also include computers and things like that that you use in your office?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I personally think we should evaluate that tax, too, by the way. But again, for the merchants' tax that we're talking about right now, I completely understand that something has to change. I am not necessarily a proponent of complete.
Supervisor Bone, are you finished? You cut out on us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Biggs.
Does Supervisor Demont want to go before me?
Sure. A couple of clarifications. If we assess on January 1, when does the revenue become due? When does the bill become due?
December 5.
Okay. And then, so the Commissioner of the Revenue administers the program and the Treasurer's Office collects the money. I heard from Supervisor Bone that she wanted a little bit more information about how all that kind of comes together. I would like more information on how that comes together as well, especially as we have had several speakers here tonight that have come forward and say and said to us that this is a voluntary tax with no actual enforcement behind it. And so we have folks in the audience or other people in the community that are paying something that other people are not paying, even though they owe it. And so I'd be interested in getting some more information on how that's assessed. Supervisor Bone was also talking about ways we could change it to be a little bit more fair, to lower it after a certain value, or even we could look at the assessment rate and lower the assessment rate, I'm assuming, if we chose to move forward with it. So there are some options to consider. I think there's a lot of different options to consider, but leveling the playing field and making it fair. And also finding out how this is administered because I think it's important that if we're going to administer this tax, that we do the service for our business community of making sure that all of our businesses are participating equally and fairly. My big concern, and I feel like Vice Chair Biggs might also bring this up, is the concern on the budget and how it will impact our budget moving forward. I know that we usually have growth revenue. The reason that we have growth revenue is because we're growing. And because the county is growing, we the demand for services is even higher. We have items on our budget tonight, I'm sorry, excuse me, on our new business section tonight about unanticipated significant expenses, which I think are just indicative of the growth that the county is experiencing and the higher needs that the county is experiencing, not just in our schools, but in our emergency services, in our police services, courts, all the areas of the county are having increased burdens due to the growth in population. And so I think it's short-sighted to expect growth revenue to make up for the loss in revenue of a line item in our budget. I also think, as Vice Chair Biggs has said before, we are given a limited set of tools in our toolbox in order to raise funds for all of the operations that we are required to support. And so I am certainly in favor of evaluating this and spending some time on it. It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that we have a couple of months. We can have a few more discussions on this and really get a lot of questions answered. But I would like to spend some time really thinking about this and thinking about if there's a way to make it more fair, or alternatively, how can we address the gap in our budget if we eliminate it? And I'm open-minded enough to say that we have a couple of different paths to consider, and I'd like to fully consider those with all of you in the coming months. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I'm in agreement with Supervisor Demont and Bone, and we need to look at the whole picture. And you guys have heard me talk about this before. I do agree, though, that we really need to look at this tax because of the information that has been presented to us by the people that are paying the tax. And is there any way that we could make it better? I think that we need to look at options. And then if the board, if the majority of the board decides that none of those options are viable and they just want to get rid of the tax completely, then I think we need to look at the ramifications of that, which could mean that you would not be able to use your new money to provide for services in a growing population. You might have to, if you wanted to keep the same amount of services and quality of services, you might have to think about raising another kind of tax. Or, as a gentleman I think mentioned earlier tonight, or you can cut your budget. While I was sitting here and when Supervisor Chair Levinson and I went over the agenda prep, we've got over $500,000 in requests for monies that weren't in the original budget that we're to address tonight. And it's going to come out of undesignated revenue. Well, it's good that we have some of that, like the reserve fund, that we can do that. But, you know, in addressing all these needs, especially with what we're doing with EMS, I mean, our costs are going to go up. So I'm very concerned about that because when you're looking at the whole picture and you're looking at your budget, you know, and I definitely agree with what I've heard expressed here tonight, I don't think any of us are ready to pull $1.5 million out of a budget that we all passed, you know, like whip it right out now. I think it would definitely have to be looked at for the future. And Mr. Hagan and Mr. Duncan and I have been through this. I did want to bring to the audience's attention that we did lower the tax in 2004 and again in 2005, but we really haven't talked about it since we lowered it in those two consecutive years. And this information that staff provided, I really think might be beneficial for us to put up in some kind of format for our citizens to see because they've listed what counties, you know, have B-Pole, what counties have merchants' capital, and they've listed how the rate and how it's assessed. And that might be information that, you know, people would like to see. And I know someone mentioned Augusta County. Well, they collect over $4 million in B-Pole, so they don't need merchants' capital. If you look at the two towns, okay, in Blacksburg and Christiansburg, the information that we were given on B-Pole was that Blacksburg, 2.7 million plus, and Christiansburg, 2.8 million plus that they collected in B-Pole. And they also get mills and they also get room tax because most of all of that, of course, is in the town. So when you look at our county, we're so different than a lot of the other counties because we have the two towns. And then we have the county that has to provide all the services. And I'm in favor of looking at the whole entire thing. And I'm also in favor of continuing to have conversation with the folks that have brought this forward to us because, you know, I think they've made some valid points. So is there any way that we could share this information that staff put together?
Absolutely, if that's a desire of the board. It's already, when we publish the agendas, it's included in the agenda.
I think it would be really valuable for folks to take a look at and sort of think about. And so that's sort of where I am. And we all want businesses to be here. We love the businesses we have. We want to keep them. We also want to provide the employees that work for those businesses that live within our county, we want to provide them the services that they need and the quality of life that they need. So that's sort of where I am. I'm open to looking at it as well as everyone else. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, I added this to the agenda on the last board meeting at the attention of many businesses that have come forward, businesses that have been fighting this for over 25 years. We've heard and had an outreach of citizens over the phone and email, they've reached out to me, talking about how unfair this tax. One reason it's unfair is because it's self-reporting. I personally don't want to go down the role of enforcement. Number one, I don't see the manpower that we would have to look into that. I do believe that it's unfair, and it's hard to imagine that a small pop mom and pop shop is paying more in this merchants' capital tax than a name brand nationwide company. That's hard to believe. It's also very unfortunate when you're thinking about businesses and small businesses that struggle and they have to have inventory. And then we tax them on inventory they don't sell. And what if they keep that inventory for several years? So that's unfair. We want to be pro-business and a pro-business and more pro-business climate here in Montgomery County. I see that this is a disadvantage to attract, retain, and give the ability for businesses to expand. We're talking about $1.5 million that, yes, is already part of this year's budget, but is only in the big scheme of things, only about 0.7%. Looking at the big picture, as Ms. Biggs says, what about companies, and we've already had one of the top payers, consider that they may move out of Montgomery County or that's a consideration for them? Think about the hundreds of jobs that we may lose. I think that investment alone, to be able to attract and retain those businesses. I am we talked about how several supervisors have questioned, well, where would this money, this $1.5 million? What I'm hearing right now from the board is that there is consensus to eliminate this tax. That's a good way to make it fair for everybody. It's gone. The other question of concern is that because it is part of our budget, and of course, we're proud to have a balanced budget, how would we replace or replenish this $1.5 million since it generates revenue? I'm still a proponent of economic growth. Historically, we have about $2.2 million in growth from Montgomery County, and I realize that that would limit some projects or new projects moving forward. But I also think that we are financially sound and physically responsible, that we do have yearly savings and ways to do that. Ms. Biggs, you talked about undesignated funds of $500,000. to do that. Ms. Biggs, you talked about undesigned funds of $500,000. But we also have, I wouldn't say carryover funds, but funds from savings, from revenue growth from FY last year, that we did not have the expenditures. So we do have some natural savings and growth. We also, historically, in the last couple of years, even though we've had COVID, our sales tax and sales has come in higher. We already know with reassessment, if we compare it, I know we haven't got the preliminaries, but we know with reassessment, if we compare it to our personal property tax, personal property tax came in 27% higher. So I'm not a financial wizard, but I'm going to say it's going to be pretty high, and that's, that would be growth for that. So I do believe that there are ways, and that's not even talking about, as you mentioned, some of our reserves and contingency plans, that we could do this. I believe with the growth, cutting, and budget, and that's our responsibility to budget, I believe we need to move forward to eliminate this tax now. 25 years, these companies, if you go back and look, even if looking during COVID, when businesses were shut down and could not work, these companies, these merchants, still paid that tax. I believe that's something that's unfair and for us to take in consideration. Mr. King, you said, "We should have probably thought about this as the first of the year," talking about our, when we're going over the budget and finances. Absolutely right. And we should have probably, if I had hindsight to, to address that, but I was trying to get the real estate tax lowered at that time, too. So I know that we have some options, but right now, I would think that we could move forward as a consensus, if I have a motion for, a resolution for staff to move forward on a public hearing, because this would require a public hearing, correct?
Could I make a comment, please?
Certainly.
The consensus that you're speaking about is four to three, which isn't exactly a complete consensus. What are you talking about when you say consensus?
A majority of the board.
Okay, I've got a question. So it's what you're proposing, of course, we can't do anything during a work session, but you're proposing to go ahead and do away with the merchants' capital tax without any further discussion or information, and cut 1.5 million out of the budget? Is that what you're proposing?
I'm proposing that we go ahead and have a public hearing, and during that public hearing, we would have more public comments, and you also have time for staff to answer any more questions for that.
So we wouldn't be able to have options that are considered? It would just be that one option, like, cut it out and then cut out the 1.5 million from the budget, correct?
We would eliminate that tax, and then my understanding is that then we would discuss options that we could vote upon.
You would need in the ordinance, you would need to put the date that it'd be effective. So you can say we're abolishing merchants' capital effective this year, then you have the, the budget issue, but that, or effective January 1 next year. So the ordinance would have to say which one.
Well, you just want to have a public hearing, right?
This would be a public hearing for an ordinance to move forward, correct me if I'm not saying this correctly, but we would move forward with a public hearing on an ordinance to eliminate the merchants' capital tax, and we have not just, an effective, I think the question would be-
Effective date, right.
Effective date.
See, the merchants' capital tax is an ordinance, so in order to eliminate it or amend it, you need a-
May I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
I don't agree with that. I, I believe that the intent is to have a public hearing, and can we have a public hearing without this kind of vote, Marty? Or do we need to have something to have a public hearing about? You know what I'm saying? We could say, "We want the public to, to give their input about the merchants' tax." Can we do something like that, or do we need a formal?
Well, I think you can always reach out to the public and get their input on an issue, if you want to do that. But in order to move forward, you have to have an ordinance that's-
Right, so that's the intent.
Advertising the newspaper.
That's the intent, is to have the ordinance, not just to discuss this. Is that what you're talking about, Ms. Blevins?
I'm talking about an ordinance to move forward to eliminate that, and part of that would require a public hearing for public comment, and would also give time for any unanswered questions. This would not be a vote to how we are going to-
Balance the budget.
Balance the budget. This would be to move forward with the elimination of this unfair tax.
But you're talking about eliminating it so that it impacts the budget that we all voted on? We'd have to cut 1.5 million dollars out of the budget that we all voted on, that was advertised and we voted on?
Correct.
Are you talking about doing it the next, for the next budget?
If we, we would have to put an effective date on that. So it would be effective before December 5, or December 5, because that's when the tax bills go out?
Well, you would, if you get rid of this year, then you're going to retroactively get rid of the tax, because it's technically assessed on January 1, but the board's saying we're eliminating it. Or you can say, "Effective January 1, '23," the tax is eliminated, so there is no tax the following year. So those are your two options, if you want to get eliminated.
So one would impact this year's budget currently, and one would, next year, we would not have that funding source of moving forward. We would know that with the budget process.
I, I, can I make a comment, please?
Certainly.
How can we move forward with anything effective, like, not collect the taxes in December, without knowing how that would affect our present budget?
We wouldn't assess the taxes in January. We would collect the taxes in calendar year 2022, but moving into 2023, we wouldn't assess or collect the taxes. Does that answer your question?
But is that what Chair Blevins is talking about? We are going to collect the taxes in December?
That's what we're not sure.
No, we have not moved forward on that. So it, so one thing, two things. I'd like to move forward on an ordinance for the public hearing, and then the decision will need to be, the consensus here would be when the effective date is. Is that correct?
Correct, but we need to have an effective date in that ordinance, so, so that's one thing the board will have to-
Otherwise, you're going to have to have another hearing. Is that correct, Marty?
Correct, yeah, correct. And so, and the hearing would be, the earliest you could have the hearing would be in two meetings, so that'd be the October-
October 11.
Yeah.
Another point to consider in the date of, if you do decide to change this, is when the commissioner's office runs the personal property book, this tax is included in that. After we finish your votes tonight, they'll be able to run the book. Because it's, it's in there now, they would run the book with the tax in the book. And then if you voted to eliminate it effective January 1 of '22-
'23.
-we would abate it, and then the taxpayer would not have to pay that. But the commissioner and treasurer have to move forward in order to get the regular personal property bills out. So it would have to be presented to the merchants that you may not have to pay this. That's just something else to consider, if you're thinking about eliminating it January 1 of '22, that timing issue.
So if we make it effective now, basically, versus if we make it effective January 1 of 2023?
Yes, that's correct. They, we have to move forward with the personal property book right now. So yes.
Can I ask just a clarifying question that's a little bit off topic, but will help me with my thoughts on what we're discussing? Is there a way, some of our speakers came forward, I'm thinking specifically about Sawyer's bus sales, where they're paying the tax on inventory that they're holding for four years, so they're paying it for four years. Is there a way or a mechanism to only charge it on an inventory item one time only, or does it have to be? I'm just asking that for clarification as we continue this discussion.
I don't know. That could be difficult, I think, to-
Okay.
I don't know that question, because I think the tax is, anything held in inventory for resale or for sale is taxable.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or follow-up?
May I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Marty, since this isn't enforced, could we keep it in place, but say, "It's okay if you don't pay it," other than the first time? Is that something that we could do?
No.
So I, I still believe that before we make any public hearing, that we should know specifically what will come out of our budget, whether it's, you know, the merchants don't have to pay it in December, or merchants don't have to pay it come July 1 next year. I think that we have time, unless you're talking specifically about not having to pay it in December, then we should know the details of what's coming out of our budget. And with regard to reassessment, or, you know, the excess revenue that we have, or the reserves that we have, there have been years in the past when we have had none of that. So I, you know, I know that the budget that is typically recommended to us has money going to reserves, has money, you know, the excess money there for a purpose. So we have to look at, I would recommend that we do look at specifically what we're going to cut out of our present budget, or out of the following year's budget. What are we going to forego? What, what isn't going to be possible for $1.5 million of what we expected, whether it's this year's budget or fiscal year '24's budget, before we make any recommendation for public hearing, to be as efficient as possible.
Supervisor, Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I think that if we were going to move forward with this, I think that the January 1 date makes the most sense. That is the least effect on our budget that we've already passed for this year, or for the current time. We've heard from our merchants tonight, and I think by moving forward and getting a, a public hearing on it, we can hear from more of them. It's a pretty powerful statement, when you've got all these employees that you're paying, and with this, by not paying this tax, you would have more thing, more money to do things for them. But the fact that they are employing our citizens is a pretty powerful thing. You know, we keep talking about, well, let's, let's try to work a way to make it fair. There is only one way to make it fair, and that's to eliminate it. The other way to make it fair would mean we would have to hire a complete division in the county administration, and I guarantee you, to enforce this on, on all businesses, we would, it would cost us more than that 1.5 million. So it's, it's much easier to eliminate it. The, the fact that it's voluntary, and we don't enforce it, there's no way to ever make it fair. There's just no, no way. And looking, looking at next year, I think we all know, numbers are coming in way higher than we expected. I think Mr. McGruder kind of made that clear. Yes, nothing is certain in the future. We don't know which way it's going to go. But I feel like by absorbing it through the annual revenue growth is the way to handle it, and the way to put it behind us, and give our merchants here in, in this county, the best opportunity to do what they do best. And if you give, don't take that money out of their pockets, they can build more, they can hire more, they can do the things that we want them to do. And by doing those things, will, again, increase our revenue growth. So I think that we need to move forward with a public hearing. I think that's important. I would like to hear from more merchants, the ones that spoke tonight. I appreciate them very much, because we need to know these things. We need to hear it from you. The, I know it's been said several times, if you have a, a small business that is paying more than a, a national chain, there's something wrong about that. And I, I don't see any way of tweaking this thing so it'll, so it'll ever work. And I think the other counties that don't have it, or have gotten rid of that, found that out, too. So, thank you.
Supervisor King.
Well, I appreciate everybody's comment, but you know, one thing we're not thinking about. We say 1.5 million. That's just a guesstimate. You know, a lot of these merchants and dealers and everybody's had a hard time getting vehicles, had a hard time getting stock. So it may not even be 1.5 million. It may be well less than that. And I, you know, I appreciate what Supervisor Steve says, you know, we, we need to go ahead and let the public come in, give us their opinion, because we have more businesses than what we have heard of. I have talked to several businesses, small businesses, and they, one thing they tell me, they do appreciate us looking at this anyway. As I stated before, the mom and pops are paying the majority of it, and it's just not right. But also, is, you know, some supervisor says, you know, we have moved forward with our budget. And, you know, if we back out on our budget now, and we tell somebody, "You got to cut this, or cut that," we, you know, it's just, I, I just think that we need to go ahead and have a public address on this, and just let people come in and tell us their honest opinions. Let the public come in, not only business leaders, but neighborhoods and all, because, you know, it affects everybody. As, as we give this month, not give it back, because it wasn't our start with, but if we eliminate this tax, as Steve said, they can do more for their employees, they can hire more people, and that's just going to make the county grow.
So are you in favor for January 1?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Supervisor Demont.
I didn't have my hand raised.
Supervisor-
I'd like to make a-
I would add one thing. One of the comments that was made was how many businesses came into a county that didn't have this tax. So we may end up gaining more than we lose. And I'm, I would be for the January 1 also.
Supervisor Ben.
I'd like to address a couple of the comments. We don't know if anybody has made the, their merchant, any other county has made their merchant tax more fair. Marty, in all instances, this has to be voluntary.
Yeah, it's voluntary that you're reporting it, and then, and then whether the county audits or enforces it is, is an essence of decision by the county.
Can I, can I add a clarification to that? It's a mandatory tax.
Correct.
It's not, you can just decide, "I don't want to file."
No, and I don't think that's what it means. I think self-reporting, it's like your income tax. It's self-reporting.
Right, that's what I was going to say. That's, yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it is a mandatory tax. That's, yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it is a mandatory tax. There are some that likely don't file that tax, just like personal property taxes. And we currently don't have an enforcement mechanism, and I'm not aware of any county in Virginia that does have an enforcement mechanism.
Um, could you, could you tell us again, out of how many counties, the total number of counties in Virginia, how many do and don't have a merchant's tax or B-Pole tax?
Okay, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
There are seven counties that have neither emergence capital nor B-Pole tax. Out of the...
Yeah, any near us?
Uh, the seven that do not have either are Bath County, Culpeper County, Fluvana County, Northampton County, Patrick County, Rappahannock County, and Washington County.
So all of Roanoke, all of the New River Valley has either one or the other. So whether a business decides to move to Pulaski or Floyd, they're still going to have to pay either one or the other. Is that correct?
Either merchants capital or B-Pole? Yeah, they'd have to, except for those seven counties that have neither one, they would have to pay one or the other.
And what is the lowest in, in the New River Valley?
The lowest rate of merchants capital tax?
Yes.
With counties at 56, 56 cents, but they assess at 100%. We're at 305, and we assess at 20%.
20%.
That's an effective rate of 61 cents, just for reference.
For us, so we're at an effective rate of 61 cents.
And the information we provided you is sorted by the effective rate? So you can see that we are just above Shannon Dewey and below Russell in our percentage.
How, how are we, as it relates to Pulaski, Giles, Floyd?
Pulaski does not have merchants capital. Giles is 87 cents. Floyd is, uh...
Floyd is $3.50 with a 15% assessment.
What's the effective?
52 and a half cents.
Right.
And is there an effective way to, because for Pulaski County, most of their businesses are outside of town limits. So B-Pole is, you know, most of their businesses are affected by B-Pole, as opposed to us in Montgomery County, B-Pole will, like the revenue generated, if we just did a B-Pole, would be so much more significantly less than what Pulaski does. Is there a way to, to, you know, somehow figure out what the effective rate is on the B-Pole as it relates to merchants tax?
We are not able to project what B-Pole would be for the county, because the information that we would need is not public. It's based on sales data for the businesses that are in the unincorporated portions of the county, and we don't have access to that data, so we can't determine that, an estimate for that.
But Pulaski County, for example, somehow got access to, you would assume, got access to, um, sales data in order to implement B-Pole. Is that correct or no?
That is correct. If we implemented B-Pole, we would be, the businesses would be required to file, and we would know at that time what the sales were. The Commissioner of Revenue would know that. It's not public to other, it's not public to county administration. It's protected in the Commissioner of Revenue's office for proprietary reasons.
Can we request that number?
No.
No.
We...
How could we get that number? I mean, how do you actually implement a B-Pole tax?
If we implemented B-Pole, then the businesses would have to file with Commissioner of Revenue's office. They would file an inc, a B-Pole return. It would have their sales figures on that, but we cannot request that from the Commissioner of Revenue.
I see. I see. Um, I do want to speak to, um, so, so one thing is, I'm assuming that at least one of the counties in Virginia does create a fair merchants tax, and I'd love to hear what that looks like. Two, um, when we're talking about reassessment, I firmly believe that some people on our board may propose reducing the real estate tax. So I think it makes a lot of sense for us to look at all the revenue sources at the same time, and what that looks like moving forward, instead of doing one thing at a time. Because, for example, we did just reduce, what, personal property tax. Is that correct?
It's on the...
It's on the agenda for this evening to discuss, yes.
Okay, okay. So, um, I think it's important to, to just be able to evaluate how this is going to affect our budget. The last thing that I want to say at this moment is Vice Chair Biggs completed her certified supervisor program a year or two or three ago. And I started that program and took a couple of courses, and the instructor who used, the instructor said that real estate tax are not sufficient to support services, period. So that's why I believe that whether it's merchants tax or a B-Pole tax, to take a long-term view, and not, you know, everything's going hunky-dory right now. If we knew that we could reduce the merchants tax when COVID hit, we should have done it then, you know? Just like we're doing, or what I'm expecting is that the personal property tax is going to be reduced. So eliminating a tax, it's always more difficult to reinstate a tax when times are tough. So I think that we should look at the whole revenue base and expenses instead of piecemeal, like it looks like we're doing right now. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs. Supervisor Demonts.
A couple of things. One, I think that it's, I think it's very important that we use words correctly. And so what we're looking at tonight for personal property tax is decreasing the assessment ratio, which is different than lowering the tax rate. So I think it's very important to clarify and use words and phrases correctly, just so we're not sending a mixed message. Two, Marty, is there, if we advertise a public hearing, the earliest that we could have it is our first meeting in October. Could we have it at our second meeting in October?
Yes, yeah. We just need four weeks. We need, because we have to advertise.
So Chair Blevins, we've got three people that are asking for a little bit more time. Can we maybe at our next meeting this month, have another work session on this that gives the three of us that are asking for a little bit more time to think about some of the details? Can we have that two weeks, and then make the decision about advertising after that work session?
Is it possible, that questions that you have, could they not be answered in that public hearing? Would we have time for staff to answer those questions and address those during the public hearing? In my opinion personally, and we'll go, I'd be happy to go around the room to see other supervisors' opinion, but these folks have been waiting 25 years. 25 years, they've been fighting this. Why delay it anymore?
So I'm not asking to delay it by any type of fiscal cycle. I'm just saying, three of your colleagues are asking for a little bit more time.
I'm of the opinion to move forward, but I will go around the room. Supervisor Shepherd.
My opinion is, if, if we're talking about doing it the 1st of January, two more weeks is not going to make any difference. But that's just my opinion.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I'm in favor with moving forward with the, with the public hearing. I think the questions that everyone has been asking, I think, can be answered within the next couple of weeks, but certainly by the time we have the public hearing, we should have the answers that folks have been asking. So, yeah, I'm in favor of going, going forward to hearing.
Supervisor King.
I'm in favor of just moving forward with it.
So we still have, okay. So...
I'm fine with moving forward with it. But you're talking about doing it in four weeks, is that right?
So it would be the public hearing?
The earliest four weeks, yeah.
At the earliest four weeks. So could we not put it on the work session for next, in two weeks?
Yeah.
So we're not losing...
Would not be, I'm sorry, would this be for the public hear, we would move forward on a public hearing that would take at least two weeks to advertise for the public hearing?
We can't do the public hearing at the next board meeting? We, it, so we have to do it the first meeting in October.
Which would be about four...
The earliest, yeah.
At, at, which would be four weeks, which should be ample time to answer any questions? And will also during that public hearing, we would have the opportunity to hear from more merchants and citizens on that.
In the interim, can we have a work session at our next meeting on this as well? If we decide to have a public hearing, can we still have another work session in between?
It's up to the board.
Good idea. So we could, so we could move forward with, correct me, what we need to do, to go ahead and advertise the public hearing?
Yeah, you, you can go forward with authorizing staff to advertise the public hearing, and advertise the ordinance, and, and the date the ordinance would be effective, right?
And that would be which, in October?
October 11th or...
First meeting, 11th?
October 11th.
That's the earliest we could do it.
And then we have time to also include a work session before that public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Or at the September, second meeting in September, you can do a work session.
Okay. Which would be the next, correct? Which would be the next September meeting? What do I need then? Do it, do I have a, just to move forward?
Yeah, we're still...
Okay.
All right, so I'm still, so I'm still confused, but let me ask this one more time. Are you proposing then, it won't affect this year's budget, you're going for the January date, so it affects next year's budget? Is that what I'm hearing?
I do believe so. And that would be what the public hearing would be on?
And so when you advertise the ordinance, what I'm hearing is, there's a majority of people that just want to get rid of the tax, and not consider any options to look at lowering it, or anything different like that. They just want to get rid of the whole thing. That's what the ordinance would say.
Correct.
But you're going to get your questions answered before we even have the hearing? Unless you're looking for something specific that you haven't mentioned.
But if we get the answers and want to change, maybe modify and not totally eliminate it, we would have to have another public hearing. Is that correct?
I don't think, I think we can pull the plug pretty much anytime we want to. Correct? We set a hearing date, doesn't mean that we're, it's passed. We have to vote on it.
To vote on it.
I'll make a motion to...
You can't. We're at work session.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I apologize.
All right, do I, no, we've got another, so...
Yeah, we still have.
Any other, let's, any other comments on this issue? Then let us take a 15-minute break. We'll come back, and we'll move on to the other issue under work session. 15-minute break. Thank you all. 15-minute break, thank you all. You didn't hear me?
There you go.
Okay, all right, we will continue, have everybody back from break. Next item under work session are legislative priorities for 2023.
And board members, we have two documents in your work session agenda packet. We have the legislative priorities that were adopted for 2022. And we also have the draft legislative priorities for 2023. And as you take a look, they're pretty similar. We did remove a couple of the priorities from the 2022 list that had been achieved during during the last year. The purpose of the work session this evening is to allow board members to review and discuss the items on the 2023 legislative agenda priorities.
Okay, all right, we will go around the room and open up discussions. We'll start off with Supervisor King.
I'm fine with all these priorities. I would like to say something about the, because I know it'd be brought up here before long, the school vouchers. You know, we put this on here for parents' choice, either for private school, homeschool, either a voucher or a tax credit. And you, I'll ask the question and I know the answer, but if somebody pulls their child out of public school and they homeschool them or send them to private school, the school funding backs off of that one, right? I mean, school gets so much money for each student.
Right, ADM, is that what you're talking about, sir?
Yeah. So where I'm going with this is, if I pull my child out of the school and homeschool them, then the school already loses that money. The only people that makes out is the state because they don't have to pay it. So if we had vouchers or tax credit, the state wouldn't get that money. The parent would still get it. You see where I'm going with this?
I believe that's correct, but I'm I'm not 100%, but I believe that's correct.
I mean, if if you pull your child out of public school, then the school system loses that funding, so the state don't have to pay it.
That's my understanding as well, for they they go on the ADM, the average daily membership? Is that what the the term is? So and they assess that March?
September 1.
I think it's September. They they measure the daily membership twice a year.
It's 10, 10 days after the beginning of the school year, I believe so.
That's, I remember that, 10 days.
Yes.
Do we know what that funding is? Is it, was it like 12,000 and something? No, not 12?
Around seven, ain't it?
Seven, six or seven.
Six or seven, I think.
Okay.
No, I think that number you're thinking about is the total.
Oh, the total, that's the total per pupil. The 12,000 includes the local funding.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So what I'm saying about this is, even if somebody pulls their child out of public school, the public school's still going to lose that money. So why can't we let that money follow the child to a private school or a homeschool?
Supervisor Bone.
I'm here, I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So let's continue the example of Supervisor King. The state doesn't have to pay Montgomery County Public Schools that 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12,000 dollars per student. But where does the money come from for the voucher? For, I mean, the the parents are looking for that money to come to them, and we have no control over that. I'm not sure what you're trying to convey, Supervisor King. Could you further explain what you're trying to convey?
That that's why we have this on our priority list, for the state to let that money go with the child. Instead of the state keeping it, let it follow the child.
Okay, so we still have all of the school buildings, all of the, I mean, the state doesn't give us extra funding. I mean, occasionally they give us extra funding for school buildings, but a- and am I right? I'm not quite sure the answer to this question, but the this calculation that's based on the ADM is all the funding, other than the title, the federal and stuff like that. But that's, there's no other funding source coming from the state, is that correct? It's all based on the student, well, I mean, student and population and things like that. But I mean, when you count the number of students and lose revenue per student, there's no other stream of money that's coming for physical buildings, maintenance, or anything like that. That 7 to 12,000 dollars is what the school school division is supposed to run everything with? Is that correct?
The schools get state money for from other sources besides ADM, sales tax, and that type of some other sources that I don't believe are tied directly to ADM.
But the primary source is tied to ADM, is that correct or no?
We'll find out.
I'm not a, I'm not 100% sure on that as well. I know a good, a good portion is tied to ADM, but I can't, I can't speak to what the other sources address.
So I think it's really important to know, you know, heck, the joint joint meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we were all talking about maintenance of the buildings, roofs, things like that. And if that's tied to ADM in any way, I I I don't, I don't get how we're supposed to be able to maintain our buildings. So I think that's important to know. I'm still not for vouchers and and it's less about the money. It's more about, there, there's overwhelming research and data that says the stu- overwhelming research and data that says the students don't actually do any better. So my assumption of diverting money from the school division to allow some people to have a choice, that's all well and good, but we're supposed to be giving all children a good education. And, and, and we're doing that. And by instituting vouchers, we're not getting any more, quote unquote, bang for our buck in that the student actually does better. So I'd love to see overwhelming data that shows that I'm wrong versus anecdotal data. So, and I have yet to to get that data, so I would love to see that. That's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Well, my opinion hasn't changed since last year. I'm still okay with everything that's on this priority list, including the vouchers or the tax credit. And I don't think it's our responsibility to see that the student gets a good education. I think we provide a good education, and it's up to the parents to decide where that education is going to come from for their student. That's the way I feel about that. That's all.
Supervisor Demots.
On our priority list, I'm very happy to see the continuing requests for funding for recreation, specifically supporting the funding for the planning, development, and implementation of a multi-jurisdictional trail system. I'm very excited to see that that's continued to be on our legislative priorities. I also think that it's important to note that we still have requests for corridor, or 81 corridor improvements, which we all know is sorely needed for our community to spend some money and some time looking at Interstate, Interstate 81, and how can that be safer and improved for our citizens and our businesses to be able to get goods and services into the community. The last item on transportation is continue to support passenger rail expansion to the New River Valley. Of course, I continue to support that initiative. I'm wondering if we need to look at rephrasing that or adding more to it now that we've advanced that mission a little bit, so that might be a legislative priority item that we can, and I'm sorry, I don't have proposed language, but we've moved the needle quite a bit on that priority, so I think if we can look at that a little bit more and think about how we're phrasing that. On the subject of school vouchers and tuition tax credits, I don't want to get into the, unless needed, of course I will if we need to, but we had this discussion last year, we had this discussion at length, we had this discussion with our community over the course of several meetings. My opinion has not changed. I, I don't support school vouchers or tuition tax credits. I don't think that there is a way to fairly administer that for people who don't and have never had children in our schools. I, I, it does not, my understanding of our role is to provide access to a good quality, free education for all K through 12 students. We are doing that through Montgomery County Public Schools. As we're not the school board handling issues within the schools isn't in our purview, but we've met our obligation to provide a free and high-quality public education for all K through 12 students. I think school vouchers fly in the face, face of our number one education priority, which is recognizing the state's role in funding quality education. I said that last year, those two items do conflict. If we're asking them to fully fund public education, but we're asking them to also provide vouchers to people that don't want to avail themselves of a free public education, I think that those are very conflicting priorities. My opinion has not changed, my stance on it has not changed, and unfortunately, if school vouchers remain on the legislative priorities, I am not able to vote in favor of the legislative priorities, even though I fully support every other priority on the list. That's how passionately I feel about this issue.
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I looked it over in the draft, and I like everything that's on it. Something that Supervisor Demots just said about the, the fully funding education, I, I don't think it conflicts with vouchers myself, because really what we're asking for there is that they just don't provide pay increases for the SOQ positions, that they actually provide pay increases for all the positions. So I, I don't think that's, to me, that's not really a conflict. And as far as the school vouchers and the tax credit, my position hasn't changed either. As a matter of fact, it's, it's even more solid now because I saw this county vote in a governor who ran on just that parental control. And I think that as we go forward, that's going to become more and more important. And I think that not everybody is going to pull their kid out of public school if and when this would ever pass. And I trust that the state legislators would come up with a fair and equitable way to, to promote this, but I don't think it's going to shut down any schools. As far as fixing roofs, I think we give them several million dollars every year, two and a half cents of our, of our tax money. So I, I don't think the world's going to come to an end if people get a choice of where to send their, their, their kids to school. And I would trust the parent to make sure that the kid gets a quality education and not, and not the state. We look around our state, we see different, different schools, school districts handle issues differently, and our school division has decided to go down a certain route that has upset a lot of parents, but these parents have no, no means to change it. And I've heard plenty of people say, well, they can send their kid to private school and pay for it. Well, that's the problem, they can't pay for it. So by having a voucher or a tax credit, they get to send their child to the school of their choice, where the, the, the child would be educated in the way that they want it to be educated. Another thing is too, is now that we have the discussion on, on unionizing the schools, I think I've said it before, the only thing that a union can do, once they get control of the schools, is to go on strike. They don't get what they want. And of course, it's against the law to strike in Virginia, but is it against the law to call in sick? I don't think so. So there's always ways around it, and if you're a parent and you want your kid to go to school, whether there's a strike, or whether there's a new pandemic, or whatever it is, and they can send their child to a school that will educate them, then I, I think that's great. So I'm definitely in, in favor of that. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Okay, I, I like Supervisor Demots, I think made myself very, very clear last year. I'm a big supporter of public education, it's a great equalizer, I have it in my blood, in my heart, in my soul, and there's just, my district is very supportive of public education, always have been, and I agree with Supervisor Demots. There is a, a big conflict there with our first recognizing the state's role in funding quality education by fully funding public education, including the standards of quality as recommended by the Board of Education, and basing teacher pay raises on actual positions, not just SOQ requirements. So there are a lot of things that go into the standards of quality besides teacher pay. So on the one hand, year after year after year, we've asked the state to come forward and be the partner that they should be in education. Some years have been better than others, but no year, to me, my personal opinion, has met the responsibility. So that means it falls on us to make up the difference, and we've done a pretty good job in our county of trying to make up the difference. So when you take any public funds away from public education, it's going to affect public education. Like, let's just, and I think I brought this up before, I was using Daryl as an example because he's my favorite bus driver, but I said to Daryl, I said, okay, you're driving your bus. Let's say maybe two or three people that you pick up decide they're going to go to a private school, which they could either be accepted or not. Private schools don't have to accept everyone, and private schools also most of the time cost way more than a voucher. Okay, so Daryl, Daryl, I said, what happens if those three students leave? Daryl's salary's going to cost the same, the school bus is going to cost the same, the gas is going to cost the same, or electricity, whichever. The school lunch is going to cost the same, running the building is going to cost the same. So you're still going to have cost, and so I in no way support using public taxpayer money for private schools, for a tax credit or a school voucher. And the thing that I think upsets me about this whole thing is, I agree, as Supervisor Demots said, with every single thing on our list of priorities, but this one thing. And it's a shame that we couldn't pull that out and have that as a separate thing, or a separate issue from the four of you all that support it, but since that was not something that could happen last year, I imagine it can't happen this year. So I will, I will be with the vouchers being left on there and the tax credit, I'll be voting no, and I want that vote recorded like we did last year with the, the ayes and the nays. And I will explain it to our General Assembly folks that I support everything else on there, but I can't support that one thing. And that's just, just the way, the way I think, not feel, but think, and I think it's the way my district thinks. So that's the way I'm feeling, thank you for letting me express that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. Looking over the priorities here again, I'm glad to see that we're keeping under law enforcement opposed to eliminated qualified immunity, which is, of course, protects our officers, and I think that's important, that we always keep that on there and for that. I also agree with Supervisor Demots on Interstate 81 about funding sources for that. We are constantly having more and more accidents, collisions on the interstate, and that means that we respond with our fire and rescue and EMS, and so I would look at that. And just overall, just funding for improvements to make sure it stays safe for our citizens, that is huge. I, I agree with the comment of Supervisor Fidzikowski in that I look at not being a conflict with our first recognizing the state's role in funding quality education by fully funding public education, including standards of quality as recommended by the Board of Education, and basing teachers' pay raises on actual position, not just SOQ. I think like Ms. Biggs, Vice Chair Biggs says, we have done, I think, a, a good job of providing for the schools and for the teachers when it's fell short at the state level. However, we cannot deny the over and over comments this past year from our parents, it was, I'd say, the last several year, of their frustration with the school systems, and that I'm for parental choice, giving a choice to the parents. They are the best ones to make the decision for their children. So therefore, I do, I have not changed my stance that I do support school vouchers and tuition tax credits for elementary and secondary students. I do understand that this board, we are each individuals that represent our each district, and we feel to vote how, as we should, for our district. So moving forward, I do understand if there could be, if supervisors do vote no on this priority list, I would feel the same way. If there was something that I, I felt against, I would want to, obviously it's record, but I would want to have a statement saying that, no, I oppose this. And I'm good with the priority list.
I did have one clarification on the opposing eliminated qualified immunity. I think when we looked at that draft, we had removed that because that bill to do that was passed by, so we're not recommending that be on your list. However, if you want to continue to keep it on the list, we can do that. Because the action that was taken passed that by, and it didn't appear that that was going to be an issue for upcoming sessions. So as we looked at drafting it, we took that out, but we can still leave it in if that's the board's desire.
You should probably keep it in because you don't know whether another bill will be introduced.
That's a good point.
It might change it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, very good. Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Can I make a comment or ask a question, please?
Yeah.
Certainly, Supervisor Bone.
Marty, can we remove the voucher tax credit language and have it as an appendix? Or, and vote, all be able to vote on the main part, and then do another vote for, you know, the appendix or whatever, however you would call it? Can we do that?
I mean, I think it depends on just how the board wants to, to structure their legislative priorities.
So what, what alternative do we have, other than just approving it the way that it is? Can we remove it, but have it as equally important, but the vote on that one thing will be different than the vote on everything?
Well, well, when the, they had the cigarette tax on there, they left it in there.
Right.
And I was against that.
Well, somebody could always make a motion to pass the legislative priorities minus the bullet on vouchers and tax credit, and then there would be a vote on it, and then I would imagine it would fail, but you could still have a vote on it and then go back and the original would be brought up. You could do that, but one thing I did forget to say, and I'm sorry to the sheriff, I'm glad school resource officers are still in their educational part. So, but that would be the answer to your question, Sarah, out of work session, if somebody did that.
Well, I think also we talked about the possibility of adding it as an appendix last year, and so before we go down too far of a road on that, last year, the answer to that question was no.
Right.
And if it, I'm getting a few heads shaking that the answer remains no.
Yes, no.
Yes, no. And so I, I, I think this is a pretty, on both sides of the issue of school vouchers. I think we're all very entrenched on our sides, and I don't think that there's any room for a, a change to the, and I'm just reading the room without any additional information, but I don't think that there's any room for a change that would be approved by the minority that would take school vouchers off of this list. That's what I'm speculating.
I have another question. Has anybody ever actually took pen to paper and said, we're actually only asking for $500? Or, no, we're expecting all $7,000? And, and if we just paid that out for the number- And, and if we just paid that out for the number of students that are homeschooled and go to private schools already in Montgomery County, how much would that be? Has anybody ever done anything like that?
My opinion is that would be too hard of a number to collect because we're, we're basing it on ADM at our schools. It would be more of a, a General Assembly-type accounting of those numbers versus a locality-based accounting.
Yeah. We don't have the authority to give local money for vouchers or tax credits. The reason that this is on the legislative priority list is so that when we go to Richmond or when we're meeting with our General Assembly folks, they would be lobbied to pass something like this. That's why it's on here. We can't.
Could we, could we put language in there saying, keeping, um, um, the ADM calculation? I'm sorry, like, funding will stay the same to the schools and the voucher and/or tax credit, it comes from somewhere else? Could we put that in there?
Well, the, somewhere else is going to be from the state funding, and if you're going to, okay, so we'll go through this again. So you got this pocket of money that comes from the state, and we're always saying it's not enough. So then we're going to say, but on the other hand, you can minus out this amount, and it's okay with us if you do vouchers and tax credits. Whatever you do, they're going to take it out of the money that is there for public education. There's no place else to take it out at the state level.
But, but the point is, is we have a budget surplus all the time.
In Richmond.
Right. And that's where the money's coming from. So all they have to do is not touch the calculation, or, in other words, if, if we change this one legislative objective to a certain way to assure that the funding won't decrease to our schools, because none of us have done the analysis to say, we don't need the money, right? So if we can change this legislative objective, priority rather, to say, don't take the school voucher or tax credit money from ADM or whatever.
The state's contribution is based on ADM, which is a calculation of the number of students in the school. So that's a statewide measure. They can't, um, it, it, we're getting X number of dollars per student based on the count. So there's no way to allocate those funds within our level of government. That's a, that's a state decision, and that affects every locality across the Commonwealth.
Well, can we just say, can we just add something that says, th- these monies will only come out of the state surplus?
That would be a decision at the state level.
We recommend, we recommend that these.
I don't think we should tell our delegates how to do their jobs, and our senators, I don't think that that would be well received at all.
That's all I have. Thank you.
To have a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Out of work session. Items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
On to new business. Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for the ordinance on October 11 to eliminate the merchants' capital tax effective January 1st, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Did I say that right, Marty? Motion and a second? Any discussion?
Just to say, this is a motion and a second on scheduling a public hearing to collect public input.
This is a motion to, for a public hearing on the ordinance to eliminate merchants' capital tax effective January 1st, 2023. And from that public hearing, then it would, then it could be a new business item to be voted on. And we are required to give 30, how much time?
We had to do two advertisements.
Two advertisements.
So in order to meet that, we can't, we couldn't make it before the October 11th.
Correct. So October 11th would be the soonest public hearing for this.
I have a question. If we have the public hearing, is your intention to vote on it the same night, or is your intention to have the public hearing and then vote on it at the next meeting?
Hopefully, we can collect some public input and make that decision.
So I would, I wouldn't, I couldn't answer that until I hear the public input. If you're asking me, would I, would that possibly change my vote? Right now, I'd say no, that I would vote to eliminate that. But it is possible at, after the public hearing, to move forward on that vote, depending on the comments. Just like any other public hearing that we would have.
I'll just add back to what I said at the beginning, just so there's, I just want to clarify, I will be in vote, voting in favor of scheduling the public hearing because I think it gives us an opportunity to have, to invite public to come speak. And that is not indicative of my feelings on it or my ultimate decision on it, but I am always going to be in favor of creating opportunities to hear public comment.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
No.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
I'm going to vote aye, but I want it made, for the record, the reason I'm voting aye is because I, like Supervisor Demott, would like to hear the public input, but also, at the same time, I think I've made my concerns clear about my worry about what we're going to do with the budget, so.
That wouldn't be effective till, so it would not affect this year. It would go into the new budget.
I'm still worried about what we do with the next year's budget because I know that's going to be a deficit that has to be addressed, and it can be addressed, I think, the three ways I said, that came from staff, increase other taxes, cut stuff out of the budget, and not be able to use new monies for needs that we have. So those three concerns, I really have, but I, I will vote yes to have the public input.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
I have six ayes, one no.
Do we have a motion to move forward with the legislative priorities as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We want to go ahead and approve our legislative priorities tonight without any feedback after the first time we've reviewed them?
These are the same as last year's, are they not? Have we changed anything?
But these have made, been made public, has, has the public had a chance to comment on them? Have we had a public hearing for that?
We don't have to have a public hearing for that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Demott?
No.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
I say no, and I would like that to be documented the way that it was last year, please. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
No, for the reasons I stated before, I cannot support school vouchers or tuition tax credits, and I would like that when we have this passed, that we record the yays and nays.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Four ayes, three no.
Boundary line agreement with the town of Christiansburg and Hutchins Road. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next up, personal property tax decrease assessment ratio to 80%.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Establishment of the PPTRA for 2022.
Motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion on this?
Just point out that the PPTRA now is 32.24%, so that number continues to decrease.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Establishment of Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Second.
Any dis, motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Lease agreement, Office of Elections.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, Emergency Services Supplemental Appropriation for Salaries.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we want to tell the public what that's for?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Can, at the June 27th board meeting, the Board of Supervisors provided consensus to move forward with funding to increase our emergency services staffing to cover 24/7 call coverage in the Shawsville-Elliston area of the county. And the estimated total cost to cover the staffing for the remainder of fiscal year '23 is approximately $300,000.
And we're taking that money from?
Unappropriated fund balance.
And that was an unexpected, well, not unexpected, but it wasn't a cost that we had in our budget.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, there's, there, I know it says 24/7 call coverage in the Shawsville and Elliston area of the county, but they don't exclusively serve that area. So if there's a call in Christiansburg or another generally nearby area, they're going to serve other areas of the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think that's an important clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Sheriff Department, is that Axon?
Axon.
Axon Body Cameras and Tasers.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can, where did this come from? Because it kind of came a little bit out of the blue.
It, it was an oversight related to a contract agreement for body cameras and tasers with Axon. Sheriff, do you want to just briefly explain the, the shortfall on?
Good late evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Meadows? So let me start by saying I'm sorry. This was an oversight, and not making excuses, but this occurred at a time when our chief deputy was seriously ill. We were in the middle of the contract phase with Axon, and we already were in a contract for the 187-525. That covered our, our body cameras and tasers. They all work in unison. And the in-car camera and interview room cameras were an add-on that we did not realize, and it was a mixed communication between the vendor and who was taking care of this at the time in Chief Deputy, former Chief Deputy St. Clair's absence. And so about two months ago, $112,000 bill shows up. And that's what was due in January, and after much going back and forth, we didn't think we owed it, but in the end, we do. And it is basically a tag-along contract to the initial contract, but all of these things work in unison.
Did I hear you say we have cameras, we have body cameras, which we've talked about?
Yes.
We've got in-car cameras?
Yes.
We've got interview room cameras?
Yes.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Uh, we have a lot of things that a lot of other agencies would love to have, and I, I could not be more grateful to the board and the county for, for having our backs.
I think it's, I think it's great because it shows a incredible amount of transparency on the part of your department.
Yes.
But it also protects you guys, should somebody make a claim against an officer or deputy, excuse me. It, it, you have the evidence to show that, that your team is working appropriately. So I think that's great.
Well, the board, the board, two or three boards ago, realized that, and, and everyone since then, has constantly been on board with us, and I'm, I'm so grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you said that the bill that you received was due in January of this year or this coming January?
Uh, that, that is going to be both. These are both five-year contracts. So there is a, a bill now for that amount, and that bill will be recurring in January.
So we're not going and paying for the previous fiscal year, is that correct?
We are.
No, we are.
No, yes.
Part of this appropriation is to cover the bill that was in January 2022.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That was the oversight.
Yes.
Or the mix-up.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Proclamation, First Responders Appreciation Month, September 2020, 2022.
Motion.
Did I have a first and a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say again, we greatly appreciate all of our first responders, everyone from 911, law enforcement, EMTs, rescue fire, our medical staff. We just greatly appreciate you, and as we remember and give honor to all of those that lost their lives and that served for the anniversary of 9/11, we greatly appreciate you, proud of this proclamation. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Miller for making the recommendation.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
I'd like to, uh, recognize Mr. Bob Miller for making the recommendation. Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Proclamation, World Alzheimer's Awareness Month, September 2022.
So moved. I asked this be put on in sort of like in memory of my sister, if you really want to know why, so.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Sheriff Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
County attorney report.
Uh, no report, Madam Chair, with this late hour.
County administrator report?
Just a couple of things. Um, first, I thank the board for adopting those two resolutions for prostate cancer awareness and Alzheimer's awareness. That I lost my dad to prostate cancer and my mom to Alzheimer's, so that's a very, both of those are very important. Uh, I have the honor of speaking to the State Commissioner of Revenues Association Conference tomorrow morning over at the Inn at Virginia Tech, so I'm looking forward to seeing that group. I'll also be participating next week in the ICMA Annual Conference. I'll be doing it over the computer instead of traveling to Columbus, Ohio, just to try to maximize my time. And then next Thursday, uh, I'll be attending the VACO Regional Meeting in Franklin County. I'm sure several other folks will be joining us, uh, next week. Uh, so busy times with some meetings, but other than that, that's all I have this evening.
Very good. All right, reports around the room. Supervisor Demots?
Goodie. Okay, I have, um, just, I had just one, but Craig made me have a second. I will be out of town, so I will be unable to attend the VACO meeting. Um, so my apologies that I will not be there.
Do you have to run it, though, you and the other person?
Nobody from VACO has contacted me to ask me to do that.
I'll tell them.
Okay, I'll, well, I'll tell them. I'll reach out.
Usually the directors run it, so make sure, yeah.
Yeah, I will definitely reach out. Um, and then, um, just one other thing. In my comments related to the legislative priorities, I brought up, um, the last item on our transportation priorities, uh, continue to support passenger rail expansion to the New River Valley, and asked if we could look at, um, modifying that. And now that we voted on our legislative priorities, I, I guess, Marty, I'm looking to you. Can we still modify that to reflect the changes in the last year?
I think if the board agreed to it, you could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we did see in consensus.
Okay, I'm seeing, and Supervisor Bone, would you be okay with that still?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I appreciate it, guys. Thank you, and that's all that I have.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to participate electronically. Thank you so much. Have a good, good evening.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
No report.
Supervisor King?
No report, but I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, joining us in this meeting, and, uh, please don't hesitate to come back.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Um, I'm going to ask at the next, um, meeting that we put on a resolution for workforce, um, because this is workforce, uh, month. And so, um, Vicki has, um, put together a resolution, and I ran it by Marty Holliday, who is our executive director for this region, and she thought you did an excellent job. Unfortunately, it might get copied with some other localities, but. And then the only other thing I have in, um, regards to time, I forward you all, um, from Jeremy Bennett, who works on the Steering Committee for Education for VACO, and he just wanted input from county administrators, so I, I contacted Craig and, and sent it out to you all. And the question is, do you intend to partner or have had conversations with members of your General Assembly delegation to bring forward legislation in 2023 that would expand the special taxing authority currently granted to nine localities to impose an additional local sales and use tax of up to 1% used solely for capital projects for the construction or improvement of schools if initiated by a resolution of the local governing body and approved by voters at a local referendum? So I thought, like, um, Jeremy just wants input, so like, if you just send input to Craig, would that be okay, Craig? Okay, and that's all, because I think, Sheriff, you'll talk about the dinner, right? That we went to.
The dinner we went to. Oh, the, it's been a busy week. Onward.
Oh, gosh, I should have brought that up. My apologies. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Uh, first, it has, has been a busy week, first of all. Um, Supervisor Demots, myself, and Chair, Vice Chair Biggs attended the onward dinner, which was excellent to look at their strategic, um, goals and what they've accomplished for the year and the award ceremony, so that was great to attend that. Um, like I said, it has been a busy, busy time, and wanted to do a shout-out to RSVP for, and their volunteers that, um, they serve this community, give so many hours of service and do such great things, but their National Day of Service, 911 Day of Service, as we, um, collected and organized goodie baskets and fresh baked goods to over, it was 23, I think I said 22 in one of my reports, but 23, um, departments and agencies, volunteer EMS, um, fire, rescue, law enforcement in Radford and Montgomery County, and that is all volunteer-based. Um, we also had the Salvation Army Hero 5K fun walk and run. That was a great fundraiser for all the great things that the Salvation Army supports in the New River Valley. And it was kind of a little concerning to hear that Montgomery County has like 30% of, of food insecurities and poverty kind of things, um, so we're going to get some more information on that as well. And then I'd just like to thank all the many businesses that have reached out to me and all the businesses that have, um, fought, all, you know, their comments and concerns, but have fought for years for this, um, merchants' capital tax. And, um, we look forward to hearing from more businesses, um, at that October 11th meeting. That will be the public hearing. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.